Father God, we come to you humble and thankful for this day, Lord. We thank you for all the days that you've allowed us to wake up and see the sun once again, Lord Jesus. We thank you that we're together as one in this county commission, Lord Jesus, and we do what's right for Montgomery County, Lord Jesus, and the citizens of Montgomery. Lord Jesus, we ask that you touch each and every one out here in the audience and I, and the land everywhere and heal them, Lord Jesus, from the crown of their head to the soul of their feet, of anything that's concerning them right now, Lord Jesus. And Lord, at this time, I ask a special prayer for the family of the late Vince Johnson. Lord Jesus, please take care of his family as they go on this journey. Amen.
Good morning. Our attendees today is the Sheriff Derek Cunningham, our attorney Michael Armistead, Risk Manager Melissa Peaks, Director of Elections Alexandria Stevens, Director of Corporate Development Shelby Stringfellow from the Montgomery Area Chamber of Commerce, and Dr. Kimba Chambers, the President of Trinum State Community College. The items to be considered at the formal session are transfer of ownership and liability for a retired canine blade, consider a resolution of the Montgomery County Commission to approve Phase Three of the Montgomery Thrive Initiative, consider a resolution to enter into a memorandum of understanding to advance public sewer investments, consider a memorandum of understanding between the City of Montgomery, Montgomery County, and the Montgomery Water Works and Sanitary Sewer Board regarding the Montgomery Thrive Initiative, consider miscellaneous appropriations to agencies, consider miscellaneous appropriations to education.
Education, I've got one addition for Bru Tech Girls Basketball, forty-eight-hundred. It's time to get new uniforms over there.
Consider miscellaneous appropriations from designated revenue.
Florence, we've got some that's on the request of funding on this orange sheet. Everybody has Cancer Wellness Foundation. We've supported them either individually and joint a few times, a few years ago, but that's one that we probably need to address.
Who's she looking at, Ms. Chair?
This one here.
Yellow.
Yeah, it looks like the last time we supported them jointly was in 2019, four years ago, for ten thousand dollars.
What did they ask for?
What are they, ten thousand? You know, and they are, the Cancer Wellness Foundation is local, and all of their money, that, you know, they don't have a national arm that gets any administrative fees, et cetera, all this money stays local and goes directly to citizens who need assistance during their cancer treatment. I'm a big advocate of doing this ten thousand dollars for them.
All right, I'm all right with that.
And then the second one is Samaritan Counseling Center. We support them through joint and also from each commissioner. The request is twenty thousand. We've done anywhere from ten to twenty. Looks like we've done twenty in the past three years, either individually or joint.
Does anyone ever visit with them to look at what it is that they actually do and whether or not they have an impact that they?
Dan and I both have.
It's been a while since I was out there. I don't know, just kind of. I want to support them, but this is their in-a-row request. We try to, we're trying to get away from that.
Commissioner Harrison, how about do a little research and then we'll just get back on this one? We'll do that, get some more research.
Okay, I'll take, I'll make another visit.
Okay, yeah, we'll do some more research and get back on that one.
Ms. Chairman, I, you know, I think I got the letter to you. I don't know if the other commissioners got it or not, but the annual ASF is the, it's their largest fundraiser, AFF, ASF, Alabama Shakespeare Festival Gala is in August. And Deb and I are co-chairs this year of, I'm on the board, of course, and Deb and I are co-chairs along with Barry Harmon and his wife. And they're requesting that we do a table, ten thousand dollar table. And they're requesting also the presence of all of us and our spouses and significant others.
Yeah, I've gone to this event in the past. It's a very, very nice event, a great fundraiser for Alabama Shakespeare Festival. Does anybody have any issue with doing that one?
I don't, I don't have an issue with that one.
I do it for Deb, not for you, I do it for Deb, so.
I'll tell her.
And so what the fundraiser is to hip, what cause?
Mainly, the thing they do mainly is education out there. Most of the money that we raise go toward the educational programs that they have. They touch some forty thousand kids a year with exposure to the theater, different camps that they hold and classes that they hold. If you're not familiar with the educational programs that they have out there, you should probably take a visit and sit in on some of it. You have children coming in from all over the state, busloads daily, not to mention the participation of Montgomery Public School students. Last year, I think it was last year that they did a play that was mainly cast by public school students.
And they want ten thousand is the request?
It's ten thousand for this sponsorship.
You know, aren't they in our annual budget or the general budget?
They are in the annual budget. This is in addition to that, in addition to what I, what I give out of my, my, I'm asking that we do jointly.
All right, ten thousand?
Yeah.
That's no problem with me on that one, just curious about.
Florence, would you add that one, please? And then the last one I've got on the joint is the KCS Ministries, the Blue Star Aviation. Pastor Carl, Pastor Cal Cersei came, I think, last two weeks ago or three weeks ago, and we had discussed that one a little bit.
Ms. Chairman, I was impressed with the presentation. I'm just going to do five thousand out of my designated for that.
And I don't think we've, we hadn't gotten their paperwork yet, but.
Yeah, when we do that, you know, I.
Let's get the paperwork, Commissioner Harrison, we'll revisit that one.
Okay, all right, all right.
You know, we always look for something unique and innovative, and I thought that program to teach kids to fly would certainly worthy of twenty thousand dollars, and I don't see why we couldn't consider doing that from the donated revenue, Ms. Chairman.
He was only asking for ten.
That's what I just said, yeah, let's wait until we get the paperwork and all that.
He asked for twenty.
Did he ask for twenty?
He asked for twenty.
Yeah, we'll revisit it, so. The other only thing, Florence, is that the sheriff has requested for the Alabama Sheriff's Youth Ranches, they're having a, their annual golf benefit, the benefit, the youth ranches, the sheriff's highly involved in that. I think Commissioner Harris, I gave you, you got the paperwork on that?
Yeah, yeah, and, you know, we can either do it out of joint or I'll, or we can split it, either way, the sponsorships are, what, five thousand, two thousand, fifteen hundred?
And a thousand, yeah.
And a thousand. You get two teams for the five thousand and two thousand sponsorships, and one team for the fifteen hundred and the one thousand sponsorship, so. It's definitely something we should support, but.
I agree.
The question is level.
Would you say five thousand is the highest level?
Five thousand and two thousand, fifteen hundred, and one thousand.
I don't see nothing wrong with us doing the five thousand for the sheriff. The sheriff is asking for some more today, so. Any objections during the five thousand dollar sponsorship for Sheriff's Youth Ranches?
Or are you teaching us how to play golf, Sheriff? Can we get lessons? That's all.
Somebody got to teach the sheriff how to play. We need to fill two teams though, if we're going to do five thousand.
And, okay, just put that one on there.
All right, anything else?
Yeah, and just an interesting side note on the Sheriff's Youth Ranches, Lynn Wheatley is director, started Safety Net, which is another program that's been very beneficial to our people here in Montgomery. He grew up in the youth ranch too, so he's a youth ranch project and student, and then he's come back now and he's continued to help other kids do the Safety Net. So it's a good program, the Sheriff's Youth Ranches are. I think that's all I've got, Florence, on the joint, if anybody has anything else.
Next item is a bid award to diversified companies for, to print and mail notices for the Revenue Commissioner's Office. Consider establishment of a Civil Engineer One position. Consider a position fill request for the District Attorney's Office for a Confidential Secretary. Consider position fill requests for the Engineering Department for an Administrative Assistant, a County Road Equipment Operator Two, and Two County Road Equipment Operators Three. Consider a position fill request for the Sheriff's Office for a Deputy Sheriff Sergeant. Consider travel training requests for appraisal, the County Commission, probate, Revenue Commissioner, and tax and audit. That's all those items. The sheriff is here to discuss the general information, item number eleven.
Florence, excuse me, Ms. Chairman, before we move forward, may I just?
Yes, sir.
Regarding the, the counter resolution to approve phases, Phase Three of, for the upper funding, now, when we discussed, that was not on the, of course, we put some items on for approval today, but they were not on the informal agenda on the last time we met. And so I want to be sure that procedure-wise, we're doing the right thing now. When we bring up something that's not on the informal agenda and move it to the formal agenda, it seems that perhaps that takes away the opportunity that I have to represent the forty-five thousand people that I represent, because I was certainly opposed to the funding for the two hospitals, not because I don't appreciate health care, but for other reasons, and I'm still opposed to that after meeting with them. And so I'm just moving forward, procedure-wise. It seems that we ought to have these items on the informal agenda before we move them to be voted on, and so I'm certainly concerned about that in the way we did that. So I want to make sure in the future that when we talk about things, we're not moving them just from discussion to be voted on at the next meeting.
Ms. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I think we devoted two meetings, discussion, that issue, and it's not out of procedure, it doesn't violate procedure for us to have, to discuss a matter in a work session and place that matter on the next agenda for voting. There's no requirement that it be listed on an information agenda in order to move to the next agenda. It could be something that's brought up in this meeting right now, and we discuss it, and we can say, next agenda. Or we could pass it that day if we waived the rules to do it. So it's not, it's not violated of any rules that I'm familiar with. And I do think that they got a thorough, thorough area, as I recall, the mayor even came up here and talked on that. We went, we, that thing went through the ring and it was lined up to go on this agenda. Now, if you oppose, vote against.
Exactly. I'm going to ask Michael.
But I'm still concerned about the way we do it.
Let the attorney, Michael, you understand what his question is?
If my understanding is correct, what you're asking is, is there a requirement for, to go on the information session prior to the formal session? Is that the gist of your question?
That's primarily what I'm after, because, you know, if we're talking about it and there's some opposition to whatever it is we might have, then it continue to move forward, that just seems to be not in the spirit of the way we do things.
According to the rules and policy that the commission adopts during the formation session or organizational session every two years, the policy and procedures does not stipulate that you have to have any item on the information session prior to it going on the formal session. So this is more of a convenience and information gathering session, like it says, being an information session, is my opinion. I do not think that there is any requirement that it go on the information session prior to going on the formal session.
Okay, thank you.
And we've done it numbers and number of times since I've been on the commission, so, so everybody have the same opportunity to vote today, up or down.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Hey, good morning, everybody. All right.
I believe you were here to discuss your community events.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I know we've been talking about it, and I think you all got a letter from me concerning some of the revenue cuts that I've taken this past year, and so I'm coming to you all for some assistance. So whatever you all can do as it relates to our camp, our fishing rodeos, and all the stuff that we do, we need some assistance.
Sheriff, how you want, you want to look through the foundation, how you want?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So I don't know what that figure has been in the past, but we've always supported those events.
I think last year you all gave me twenty-five thousand, yeah, last year, and probably ten the year previous to that, so. But this year, you know, I'm just being honest with you all, we took about a six-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand-dollar cut. And so now it's kind of hard to continue to do outreach programs and do the things that we were doing without asking for assistance.
The cuts, Sheriff, where did the cut come from? Help me understand.
That was my discretion that we did on the permits.
Gun permit fees went away, and that was a major source of revenue.
Tell them how much they gave you to replace it, Chair.
We got, our last grant was fourteen thousand. Yeah, you know, they said they were going to give us the money to help us out on our cuts, yeah, so we got fourteen thousand for the first quarter, and I'm not good at math, but there's four quarters in a year. If you give fourteen thousand dollars, now y'all tell me if I'll be making it up. I'm not.
Sheriff, how did we do this in the past? Does this come through our discretionary money, or does it come through the, does anybody know, Teresa, do you know? From our designated revenues, what's done in the past? Okay.
Do you have a list of those activities yet?
Yeah, I got them on that email from our show-and-tell summer camp, our senior and senior fishing rodeo, our youth fishing rodeo. And now we're doing, we got several other things planned for, out at Dean's Park, and we got something planned for National Night Out. I mean, all of that stuff where we give away, we hear that, hear that word, we give away food and stuff to the community, we don't do all that.
Yeah, they got Easter egg hunt, definitely in the park, water distribution, youth fishing rodeo, senior fishing rodeo, camp, show-and-tell, National Night Out, Alabama National Fair, Halloween Spooktacular, and the Christmas and Thanksgiving parades.
Yes.
So something about every month.
Yes.
All good events, too. Well-attended.
Oh, yeah, and, you know, I always make sure you all are there.
Well, we'll take this into consideration and let you know something pretty quick.
Thank you, I do appreciate it. I think that was it, honey.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Michael Armistead is going to discuss item number four, a future agenda item.
What I prepared in coordination with attorneys for the Department of Human Resources is a memorandum of understanding, and what this is, is currently the DHR facility in Montgomery County, the contract has expired, and what this DHR MOU will do is it will bridge the gap, making sure we have the terms that, we incorporated the terms from the prior agreement, and then we're going to work on a new agreement to get the DHR under a lease. Now, there are some stuff that's going to be going on out there, but this will get us until the point that we get, where we get the lease ready.
I should know this, but can somebody bring me up to speed? They were going to raise the building and build new, and we did a twenty-five million deal on that. What's the latest?
The, the quick summary of what's gone on, architect plans were drawn up, commissioner didn't approve the plans, sort of started over. You may remember, you approved changing architects, and so Goodwin Mills in Kwood has designed new plans for the renovation of the building, not raising it and starting over. I talked with the architect, who's the main one on the project. They hope to have construction documents ready in two to three months, and it will go out for bid, and hopefully they will start construction in the fall.
Renovation?
Yeah, renovation of the existing building.
Because we were assured that that was not an option once upon a time, many, many years ago, when this conversation started, but I'm glad to see that it is.
And I discussed that specifically with Goodwin Mills, and they said absolutely they, they had confidence. They, they said that it will almost be like a new building. They're replacing all the mechanical, taking the skin off, replacing that.
What's interesting is that was the reason they gave for building a new one, is because what it would take to fix it would be like building a new one, and so why not build it?
That was the argument, but.
Very interesting.
Will, will the, will the processes and employees and all that be displaced? Or will they be able to do it in segments to where they won't be displaced?
They left the building last November.
Oh, that's right, they did, I didn't know that, I didn't know that.
And so they are eager to return to that location where they feel they can better serve.
This has been a typical government project.
Yes.
Classic government project.
And so we will be back with you once we have a firmer date to talk about the bond issue. Because the way, they will, they will not go, there will not be bonds issued until they have a bid amount, contract amount, so they know how much to borrow.
So does that one that we already approved, is that terminated, that's done and over with, and we'll have to start anew?
Well, we never, we never approved any documents.
Moved forward with that, yeah.
You agreed, selected Frasier Lanier as the underwriter, and so.
But then it just died on the vine because there was no progress on the project? Okay, thank you for that update.
That'd be next agenda.
Melissa Peak has items five and six. She's done an excellent job of explaining what she's here to talk about or to ask be moved to the next agenda, so if you have questions for her, or she can just give you a brief overview of what she's presenting.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
The two items that I'm presenting to you today concern inmate health care. The first item is the renewal of our stop-loss medical insurance. We've had this policy for a number of years, and it has been very helpful in those times that we've needed it. This renewal, the only difference this year is there's, there's a slight increase of about two thousand dollars, but we have also increased our limits, so in a way we are getting more for less. Do you have any questions?
Very similar to what we did in 2022, which was a good year for us.
Yes, sir.
Twenty twenty-two.
Yes, sir, and if our, if our loss history continues to improve, thank goodness we're coming out of COVID and we don't have to keep the inmates as long and have to incur those expenses, our loss history should continue to improve.
Because you can see where COVID was affecting the jail.
Those were big years, yes.
So this is just a schedule to renew it, then?
Correct, in April.
Any questions on that? That'd be next agenda.
The second item is a matter that we discussed, that we discussed back in July. If you will recall, we had to do a fairly large budget change request to pay for inmate health care fees to Millennium Risk Managers and the off-site providers. This prompted me and the sheriff's office and the administration to research other solutions, and today I've presented to you our research, and we are requesting that we transfer this professional service to Heritage Health Solutions. And basically what they will be doing is what Millennium does, processing our medical bills at a deeply discounted rate under federal contracts.
Who was doing this before, again?
Millennium Risk Managers is currently who's doing it. We still have the program in place with them. It is a percentage-based fee, so that fee fluctuates depending upon how many people have to be sent off-site. So far, we are paying them an average of, it's over two-hundred thousand dollars just in processing fees based upon the percentage rate. By going to Heritage Health Solutions, who is also contracted with the Marshall Service, they provide a flat-rate service that is substantially lower than its competitors.
Is Heritage local?
They're in Birmingham.
They're in Birmingham?
Yes, sir.
Millennium as well?
Millennium is as well, yes.
So we're saving one-hundred-and-fifty thousand a year?
Yes, sir. I've run the numbers every which way I can.
I know you have.
Thank you for doing it.
So.
Any other questions on that? That'd be next agenda. Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you.
Elections Director Alexandria Stevens is here to discuss item number seven.
Good morning, everyone. This item is a memorandum of understanding regarding the administration of the 2023 municipal elections for the city of Montgomery, and it basically states that the Montgomery Election Center will be responsible for the administration of the elections. We will handle all aspects of the election except absentee, that will be handled by the circuit clerk. It also states that the city is responsible for all costs associated with the election.
Has a date been set for that election?
Yes, the municipal election is set for August the 22nd, and if there is a runoff, it will be October the 3rd.
You're all set?
Yes.
You're doing good.
Thank you, thank you. I've itemized all of the associated costs, reached out to all of the vendors to get quotes to make sure that, you know, we're not overcharging, we want to be fair with charging the city for the use of our equipment, and like I said, all of the vendors sent over their quotes for what they will be charging, so I sent that price sheet to the city clerk, so they're reviewing that now, and I haven't heard anything back just yet, so we're all set to go.
So that'd be next agenda. On our, separate note, on all our polling places, we're good on the physical locations, we've got them all.
Yes, we are working on that resolution now. I got the maps for the precincts affected from Lewis on yesterday, so once I get all of that together, I will send it over to you all for review.
Perfect, all right, thank you. Thank you, Alexandria.
Shelby Stringfellow is here to ask you to waive rules to consider a resolution authorizing the conveyance of land to Mana Beverages and Ventures.
Yes, thank you for having me here today. Just wanted to follow up this.
Sheriff, go to the mic, can you hear?
Is this better, can you hear me?
Yeah.
This request is kind of a follow-up for some action we took back in October of 2022 in support of Project South, which is Mana Beverages and Ventures. We passed a resolution back in October of 2022, which allowed the funds to be committed to this project moving forward. This is just kind of a follow-up to that. The purchase and sale agreement of the land was negotiated after the resolution was passed back in October. Chairman Singleton was able to actually negotiate a discounted purchase price for what we originally agreed to in, in the resolution from, from 500,000 down to 350,000, and moving through the process. Typically, if this process would have taken place on its own, there would always be a resolution in place with the purchase and conveyance of land by the county. However, we went ahead and decided to go ahead and bring this before the commission again, just to make sure we covered all of our bases.
Is that closing scheduled for next week?
Closing is fluid within the next two weeks, yes, which is why we're asking to, to waive rules.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I want to thank the Water Works for working with us on this project.
Exactly, yeah.
So the only difference between what we did previously and now is the difference in the contract price for the land?
Well, no, the only difference is we've actually entered, the county has actually entered into a purchase and sale agreement, a sales contract with Water and Sewer Board. The previous resolution authorized the county to spend the money and move forward, but a purchase and sale agreement had not been negotiated. So that has been negotiated, and we have a contract in place, but then in addition, the land will be conveyed to Mana. And so that was also stated in, in the previous resolution that was approved. However, we want to go ahead and just make sure everything's fluid and clear, and just go ahead and do this again in one motion to basically top off our loose ends. Is that clear?
Yes.
We weren't, we weren't sure if, just want to make sure we've got everything covered, don't want to leave anything hanging out there.
And this is just for the sale of the property owned by the Montgomery Water Works?
Correct, correct.
16.5 acres?
16.5 acres, that's correct, yeah.
Us receiving and us selling. Us receiving from Water Works and, and conveying to?
Correct, yes, sir. That's correct, yes, sir, correct.
Any objection to waiving rules?
No objection.
We have two other waiver rule items to consider and also to hear from Dr. Chambers.
Let's go ahead and go through the waiver rule items and then we'll.
Item number two is consider funding of economic development projects.
Any objection to waiving rules?
Ms. Chairman, you and I have discussed that. I'm opposed to waiving rules, and I don't know if we need to have any further discussion on that, but for the record, I'm opposed to waiving rules on that item.
That's fine, next agenda, we'll put that to next agenda.
Item number three is legislation regarding the Personnel Board.
I have no objection.
Any objection to waiving rules?
Do we need any discussion on that at all about just what it is? Can you just, would the attorney just give us a brief overview on what it is that we're doing, please?
Are you prepared for that, Mike, or you want Florence to do that?
I am, I'm, I'm familiar with it. All it, it, what it says is that the commission, by doing this, they will repeal sections 45-51A-32-110 to 45-51A-32-127. Those are the, that is the legislation that boards the Personnel Department.
And so just for people to know, we're, we're considering, the county's considering having our, having our own Personnel Department, splitting the, what we commonly know as the city-county personnel. But we, we, the city wants their own, we want our own.
It would dissolve the current structure of the Personnel Department.
Okay.
But we have to have legislative approval to have that done, correct, Ron?
Yep, we, we, we're saying today, okay, we're giving the okay for our lobbyists and for our state representatives to move forward with the legislation.
Your session starts today, right?
Today's the second day of the session.
So we, we're hoping to get it in this session, right?
Sir.
We're hoping to get it in this session.
We hope to get it in this session?
To get it in this session.
Yes.
Yeah.
The session should go through June 8th, so we theoretically should have the time for it to.
Yeah, this will, this merely get us out there.
Yes, sir.
And make sure.
This will, this will enable the county to advertise, which will have to wait for four consecutive weeks.
Does anyone know whether this current city-county Personnel Board gets reimbursed for their services?
Yeah, they get a small stipend.
Okay.
$25 a meeting.
Okay.
And we have to have.
And, and we should really be on our homework so that should this legislation pass and they abolish that board, we should be in a position to start our own, make sure that we know what that's all about, it's something new to us.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Want to make sure we're out in front of it.
Is there any objection to waiving rules on this item?
No objections.
Okay.
Dr. Chambers.
Good morning.
Morning.
I want to see some smile on your faces, you look like you're working too hard this morning.
You certainly brought a smile, so I'm going to try to be like you.
Thank you for allowing me to be here today. I'm excited about the great things that are happening at Trenton State and just wanted to share information with you on our new transformational plan. Currently, the college is working to redevelop its campus sites and providing resources needed for the entire community. We take a concerted approach to ensure that we're offering instructional workforce development programs to reach the needs of all of our community. Hearing the needs of our business partners and industry partners and providing training programs that are essential to the needs of members of the community is our number one focus. Focusing on the college's transformational plan, Trenton State has set forth to establish three distinct campuses. You are aware of the Patterson Campus and the Trenton State Campus. Our most immediate need at the college is establishing a healthcare training program. This is essential because we've heard the needs of our community, community partners in the healthcare industry with the worker shortage. And listening to those, we have realized that this is very important at the college. We have 34 instructional program offerings with 14 of them being healthcare. We service not only Montgomery, we service Bullock, Macon, Lowns, and Elmore Counties. With those 14 healthcare programs that we offer, Trenton State is the largest healthcare provider for the River Region. After losing employees to the healthcare when we had the COVID-19 pandemic and seeing the decrease of employees in our hospitals and other healthcare agencies, we know that it is needed here in Montgomery. With all of the college's healthcare programs we currently have located on the Trenton campus, we have less than 10% of our current healthcare students that reside in West Montgomery. In addition, seven of our healthcare programs are selective admissions programs. And with the limitation of space, we are unable to increase cohort sizes that lead to the workforce, and we're able to increase our new programs. So therefore, the college finds it necessary, necessary to move its program to a centralized location. In addition, with discussions with our hospitality industry partners, the River Region is in need of additional healthcare workers and hospitality workers. With Montgomery becoming the number one tourist site in Alabama with the Equal Justice Initiative, the Legacy Museum, that we are in need of hospitality workers. So we're looking to not only move our healthcare programs, but also our culinary and hospitality programs to a centralized location. We have identified the Blunt Property, which is located in Executive Park on Eastern Boulevard, as our third campus. Expanding programs to this particular area will help on the Boulevard with investment and also provide a centralized location with our area healthcare partners Baptist Jackson and the Nursing Home Associations. Not only are we looking to transform our property over at the Blunt Property, we're looking to reinvest in our West Montgomery campus. Because 10% of our citizens are there in the healthcare programs and they do not reside in that area, we found it beneficial to ensure that we are providing programs on the Trenton campus to help our citizens of West Montgomery. In order to do that, we have built a second truck driving location over there, and we're also going to look at expanding to a workforce training hub on the west side of Montgomery. We are hoping that with that, that it decrease unemployment rates, promote job trainings for business and industry, and expands more opportunities in West Montgomery to our citizens for training. Lastly, our Patterson Site will continue to provide what it currently does, our career technical education programs and academic programs. As the college moves forward with this transformational plan, it is important that we have resources to move this program forward. With the most recent purchase of the old Blunt Property, it's in dire need of renovations. All told, the project is expected to cost close to $60 million by the actual end of 2025. The college has committed financial resources towards the project as well as our chancellor Jimmy Baker being committed to the project along with the ACCS Board of Trustees, and we've also talked to other stakeholders in the community. We want to ensure that we have financial support to the renovations of the property in order to enable us to expand our healthcare programs offerings and help meet the needs of our community. This will allow us to meet our goal of becoming the premier community college for the River Region. Thank you for your time and any consideration.
Anybody have questions for Dr. Chambers?
Dr. Chambers, the, the Blunt Property, you say purchased renovation total about $60 million?
Yes, we've purchased the property.
You've already purchased the property?
So we've purchased the property, so we will need additional funds for renovations, and the renovations of that property will be close to $60 million.
How soon before you start to turn out the skill, healthcare providers to meet the growing demand? How soon do you think you'll have an impact on that?
I would say in the next year or two, just depending on progress of renovations, how long it's going to take to renovate. We've already met with architects on the property, so that hopefully it will be something that we will do in phases, but I'm hoping to have everything completed by the year 2025.
Can you just tell us what type of skills will you be providing for the healthcare arena?
Sure. We have 14 healthcare programs. We have nursing, P N, R N nursing. We also have radiology, we have ultrasound, we have nursing assistance, we have dental assistance, we have, let's look at respiratory therapy, phlebotomy, we have medical assisting. We have a lot of healthcare programs, and when you look at Trenton State and what we offer compared to our four-year university, we can do a quick turnaround in investment to the workforce. We have short-term training programs that can go anywhere from two weeks all the way to two years. So we're able to fill those immediate needs right now that's needed in the River Region, our healthcare shortage.
You have the necessary staffing, the, the teachers, the instructors already in place to start this program?
Yes.
I was hoping to get a job, but you don't.
Dr. Chambers, appreciate you coming down to our meeting today and giving us this presentation. What Trenton does for the Montgomery community, the River Region community, all of central Alabama is absolute key to our workforce development piece. Just thank you for what Trenton is doing, and, and, and I for one want to be more supportive of that. People, you know, what, what you're doing with these one-year, two-year hands-on workforce development, you know, only 30% of Americans have a four-year college degree. Only 30% have a four-year college degree. That leaves 70% that, you know, once upon a time, in the 70s and 80s especially, you were told, go to college or work at McDonald's. And those, you did, there wasn't any in-between. And, and workforce development and programs such as the ones that Trenton offers were marginalized. We're not that dumb anymore, and we haven't been the last 20 years, but it was a big ship to have to turn around, and y'all are doing it. But this piece is critical. The commission, we've been invited out to a couple of recent events at Trenton, and I was unable to attend either, unfortunately. I'm going to reach out, I would like to come out and meet with you and, and, and get a better feel in addition to what you've told us today, because we know how critical, and, and the things that you mentioned, the hospitality and the, and the medical field are key. That's exactly what we need in Montgomery, manufacturing also. But we appreciate what you're doing, and, and I'm going to come out in the next couple of weeks and, you know, find a time to sit and talk with you, and we definitely want to be supportive of your efforts.
Thank you.
Dr. Chambers?
Yes, sir.
What's the ask? What is the specific ask?
Don't ask me that.
Let me, let me go, let me go meet with her and get more information and kind of a breakdown. I don't want her to commit to saying something today that is going to get stuck, but if that's okay.
Okay, but I, I, whatever she asks, I'm.
She said, she said she wants everything we'll give her.
I know, right?
I'm full supportive of what you do and what you're doing with the community. And I understand that we for so long have taught that college was the way to go, and we forget about the people that started in the community, that were the brick masons and that were the, the, did concrete for a living, and they made an honest living. And that's something we got to get back to in our community. I think when we get back to that community, I am a full believer that that will cut down on even crime. Because when you have a job, you have an opportunity to go, you don't need to take from anyone, and you're not busy about trying to hurt anyone because you're going on nine to five and you're making an honest living, and an honest living beats everything every day. So my hat's off to you right there at, at, at Trenton. And, and we'll wait for, for Commissioner Walker to go, but know that you have my full support of what you're doing, and especially in West Montgomery.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Chambers.
Thank you.
Florence, you had, what, eight, nine, 10, and 13 still left on the items?
That's correct. Item number eight is an amendment to our contract with Outdoor Obsessions to add locations for their lawn services.
Is this in the parking rec budget, or would this be in addition? It's $1,300 a month, I think, to add the two locations.
I'll be honest, I, I do not have an answer for that.
Yeah, we'll have the answer by the next meeting, but.
Right.
So any other questions left? That's to be next agenda.
Item number nine is a bid award to Acme Supply Company to provide inmate uniforms for the detention and youth facilities.
Any questions, discussions on that one? We did have a lot of bidders on that one, which was good. And I think it's minority business that was a low bidder, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, but that'd be on next agenda.
The final item is a bid award to American Ultraviolet Company, item number one, and Max Assure Inc., item number two, for mobile UVC disinfection units for the detention facility.
Any questions about that one? Again, we had four, what, three bidders, ain't one no bid, but that'd be next agenda.
The final item for discussion is number 13. We, our appointee to the City County Personnel Board has resigned, and we need to appoint a replacement.
I'm working on it.
Dan, you working on that one?
Yeah. Isn't that the gentleman, is that the person that you recommended in?
Yeah, I don't, I don't, for some reason, the firm decided that there was a conflict. They, it seems that they, they represent the city as well on some cases, and they, so he had to resign. So we'll, we'll find somebody else.
Florence, anything else?
I believe that's all.
A couple of quick items. Mental Health is offering a tour to the commissioners on Friday. I need to find out what time. If you're interested in joining me for that tour, commissioners, please.
Care here?
That's Friday the 24th?
Uh, care start, yeah. What time, what time does it, well, let me look real quick since you.
Why did the other event get canceled?
It was, I'm sorry, it was postponed. They, I think truthfully, they wanted to finish, make sure everything was completely finished, and, and it's been rescheduled.
April the 4th, I believe, or something like that.
Right.
Which I won't be here, so if y'all could, anybody could attend, it'd be great. But the tour on Friday is just a tour of the facility, it's not a open house or ribbon cutting or anything like that. But we're more than, and I want to say it's nine o'clock. I want to say nine, because we got, Colonel Briggs is retiring on 10 o'clock on that Friday, right? 11:30, I had that, I had. 11:30, I had that, I had that down wrong too, but that's on, yours is on March 24th too, right? This Friday. So you got two more days or three more days to work in, so 28 years. I wanted to mention you and sing you out and tell you thank you, we'll tell you again on Friday, but in front of this commission and this group gathered today, thank you for your 28 years of service to Montgomery County. I'm going to miss you, you know that, because I call you all the time, you probably glad I won't call you anymore in the middle of the night and wake you up and stuff, but thank you for all your service to the county.
A lot of people want to miss you.
And that's all I've got. We'll take a, unless y'all have anything else, real quick? We've got about a six-minute break, we're going to start promptly at 10. I think we've got a pretty good agenda, so we'll start promptly at 10.